Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 20th, 2018 to order. At this time, we'll have a quick moment of silence, try and remember all the folks out in California, the fire victims, the tragedy that's going out there, and then for all the families, whether it's ours or anyone else around here that's traveling to and fro to visit people during the holiday season, we wish them a safe travel. So at this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. And I'll ask everyone to please stand and join the City Council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Very good. Ms. Jackie, if you'd please call the roll.
Ambrose.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Kluel.
Present.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you. So tonight, as we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to again welcome everybody in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region. Happy you are participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire that we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, families in our community, those in attendance, a lot of them tonight, and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. This time, we ask you to please silence your cellphones and any other electronic devices so they don't interfere with what we're doing. Wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on our committee agenda, please do so during that committee's time. You also have an opportunity to address the City Council under the public of a business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. We ask that when you're addressing the council, you step to the podium, be recognized by the respective council members, and then speak to the council as a body, not any single member. We ask you to, when you're addressing the council, that you limit your remarks to five minutes. I ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Is there Mr. Wright, sitting in for our wonderful Ms. Spiegel, any city administrator update?
Up in this evening.
Thank you. And then we have one public hearing tonight in Community Development, and Alderman Gripp will help lead that public hearing. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, we have one item on the public, on Community Development, public hearing this evening. I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to bring up Arista from Cameros, the company from Chicago that was hired to help with the zoning rewrite. She'll give a presentation, we'll open it up for public with comment, and then you'll see it again as the first item under Community Development, and then at that time, if anyone from the council has questions for Arista, we can do those then. So, public hearing for case number ORD 18-05, request of the City of Davenport to repeal and replace Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning" by adopting a new zoning ordinance and map and amending Titles 2 and 14 in order to make administrative changes to support the new code. Arista, if you want to present. Thank you.
(inaudible) Oh, okay. Had I known that. And of course, there's always the antivirus. Right. I was told I should keep this presentation brief, so this does not count against me. So...
(inaudible)
Alright. Well, um... Does that work? That works. Okay. Well, hello, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight. I've prepared a very brief presentation. I know many of you have attended the open houses and things and have heard me speak for about 27 minutes, not tonight, but just very briefly, a quick reintroduction to who Cameros is, because when we started this project two years ago, I was blonde, then I was a redhead, now you see the journey back to blonde, so we're brunette at this point. So Cameros is, we're a multi-disciplinary firm located in Chicago. We do a lot of zoning work. I'm a principal and co-owner, and I am the zoning specialist. I had that area of practice for Cameros. I've worked there for about 20 years, done work all across the country, many different places from communities the size of Davenport to those significantly larger, and many significantly smaller. One I'm working in is only 500 people in it. So as you can see, we've worked in big places, Baltimore, Buffalo, Charlotte, North Carolina, but also places Knoxville, Tennessee, Rome, New York, Spring Hill, Tennessee, so really a variety of places all over. We also worked in Council Bluffs, Iowa, a few years back as well. So really quickly, to kind of get to why we're here, as you know, updating the zoning ordinance, one of the key things is the idea of updating it to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan and really implement those policies that it can. Now, it can't do everything that's in the comp plan, but it can do a lot, in particular of the land use portion, and that's a key part of this project. The other is to make a document that's easy to use. I know a zoning ordinance isn't exactly, you know, it's not a John Lee Correille novel that you sit down and read at night, but you want to make sure if you're going to look through it and you need to read it, that it could be something that can be a bit more intuitive. So a lot of this was restructuring, adding more illustrations, making sure the language is as clear as we can make it, because it still is a legal document, making it more objective, more transparent, as well as eliminating excessive special approvals. So the idea is to create a much more user-friendly document that really reflects what's on the ground here in Davenport, as well as where you're going into the future, based on the future land use plan. There are a number of points of public input during this process. It started with basically a very simple website that has a comment form and email contacts for people to always get the information that's available as we release documents and drafts and maps on that, so that was always available. People could sign up for notifications when new things came online as part of that website. Early on, we conducted a number of stakeholder interviews. I know we spoke with some of you as well at that time, and really getting input from people who use the ordinance and find out kind of what the issues were. We had a zoning advisory committee that started way, way back. If you remember, we did a technical report, and we worked with them through the technical report, through reviewing the draft, really making sure that we get this kind of variety of input from people as we released things to the public. We did a series of public meetings. We were here during the technical review report. We were here during interim times, really looking at that and presenting information as we had it. We've spoken to you guys a couple of times already, on, again, the council presentations, as well if you remember that banner that you see there when we did the Traveling Road Show when we were here for almost a week, where we went around, we had different stakeholder meetings during the day, and then we had different open houses where people can come and talk to us, did a presentation and made ourselves available to take one-on-one questions from any of the public who came and wanted to talk to us about very specific issues. So there's been a whole series of kind of public input points throughout this process. So one of the main things you see, kind of what I spoke to initially, there's a lot in here that really tries to look at a better organization, things like compartmentalization, putting like provisions with like. In the end, that makes it easier to amend the document when you have to update it a few years down the line. Internal consistency, using the same word to mean the same thing in each of the chapters rather than bouncing back and forth between terms. Creating a measurement methodology that's the same. So you'll see in the beginning of the document, there's a chapter that speaks to exactly how things are measured, a lot of definitions, making sure that zoning deals with issues of land use rather than ownership. So you see the condo provisions were moved, and as you saw, as we talked about from very early on, the flood districts, as well as historic preservation regulations, those were all moved to the municipal code and out of the zoning ordinance. So they're not gone, they've just changed locations, making them a little bit easier to administer rather than being within the zoning ordinance itself. We did a more generic use approach. This is a much more flexible, modern way to handle uses, so you see things being grouped together. Again, you're all probably sick of that one graphic and probably sick of me saying shoe store, record store, bookstore, clothing store, and lumping it all together as a retail goods establishment. And again, we've done that for a number of uses, but still brought out a few that we know have some significance and need to be regulated separately. You also see that it's, the cumulative use approach is gone, that everything just relates specifically to the district, so no earlier district. It doesn't rely on any other district to tell you what uses are allowed. You're just very discrete units in terms of what's allowed in that district. And then, again, maintaining use standards for some of the uses. You already have a pattern of doing this in the current ordinance. We brought this over and then added a few more to that to make sure that we're addressing any impacts of the uses. Again, uh-oh. Alright, it's, okay. So then, again, you see the use matrix. We've kind of talked about this a few times. As I pointed out, each one has, as you go straight down, you see permitted uses, special uses, and if it's blank, it's prohibited. Makes it very easy to access this table, because you can either access it by, I'm in this district, what uses can I have, or I would like to open this use, what districts would allow for such use to be located in there. So it's a very easy way to access what you're allowing in terms of use permissions. Just to highlight a couple of the new principal uses, the ones that have gotten a little bit more attention than the others, we have addressed accessory dwelling units. We have these as accessory use, as uses allowed in the R1 through the R4 districts. Again, there's a lot of limitations on them, 1,000 square feet in size maximum, that you have to locate in the rear yard and meet the setbacks, and in addition, one of the units has to be owner-occupied, so there's some controls on how those would function. We did the neighborhood commercial establishment. This is for things that are typically called the corner store. Can't call them that, because sometimes they're not on the corner, but what we wanted to do is allow for those kind of non-residential structures to be reused for things that could be beneficial to the neighborhood. You'll see in the most recent few drafts, we're very specific, things like alcohol and tobacco sales are prohibited within those. So these are meant to be very low-intensive neighborhood-serving and neighborhood-compatible uses. Also, the full range of social service uses, everything from group homes to drug treatment clinics, to things like shelters, domestic violence shelters, homeless shelters. We've addressed all of those, as those are uses that are coming up kind of everywhere. We're dealing with them in many different cities. These are things that are of urgent need to be addressed in ordinances because they are coming. You'll see those have standards as well, as well as in some cases, a health services and congregate living permit. It's a new permit attached to those as well. Food bank and the food pantry, those are another type of uses that are coming up a lot, and then kind of newer technologies like solar farms and wind energy farms. The residential districts, you'll see here, these were kind of restructured to reflect a lot of what's currently on the ground here. We did a lot of analysis based on lot sizes and development patterns. So you see here, it's kind of the gradation. R1 and R2 are single-family. R3 and R4, they're single-family and two-family, with two-family requiring a slightly larger lot size rather than just a single-family size. The R3C and the R4C, those have replaced the RIDO, so what we've done is kind of collapsed the overlay into a base district, made it a lot easier for people to understand what can happen in those districts, so it's really bringing over what you have and creating a new base district, but keeping the intent that you have already. And then a multifamily district, as well as the manufactured home park district. Again, those are kind of existing. You'll see that you've got some design standards for the different dwelling types, so those kind of impose a kind of base level of kind of good building quality on new construction. We've also done some innovative things in the kind of the R3, R4 districts, or even in the R1, R2, allowing for a house court, and you can see that image down there in the corner. It's really allowing for a single-family to, rather than be constructed down along a block, they can be constructed around a courtyard. So it's really keeping that single-family pattern, but just creating this kind of more innovative design that is becoming more popular across the country. We've also done a number of things to kind of really reflect the commercial districts, the gradation of commercial that you see here. So everything from transitional, which is near the neighborhoods, to more intensive uses like the C3 general commercial, as well as a commercial office park. And then you see three kind of special commercial districts, the CD, the downtown, the CV, Village of East Davenport, and the CE, Elmore Corners. That one's a little bit newer, but that, all three of those reflect the adopted plans and design guidelines, so essentially, they're being mapped over the areas they've been planned for. We haven't brought the design guidelines in, it's just a reference to those. Finally, in the last sets of districts, you've got the industrial, the I1, I2, they're just your M1, M2, just renamed, my kind of more modern nomenclature, as well as the new industrial mixed-use district, which is this combination that can be industrial uses, light industrial uses with some commercial in it, addressing those areas that may be in a bit more transition, also a bit more flexible in terms of adaptive reuse. And then finally, special purpose districts, the agriculture district, the open space district, which now combines what used to be, we had done one for open space, one for natural areas, we've combined those together into just the open space district, as well as the institutional campus district. You did have a casino overlay that's been eliminated. What we've done is allowed for the casino as a special use within the Elmore Corners district, which is really where that's located. We've cleaned up a lot of the site development standards. I don't know, you're probably all very familiar with your current ordinance, this is one of the more confusing elements of it, in particular, things like landscape or parking requirements. So what we've really done is tried to kind of lay out everything that's there. So you see the first section that deals with things like accessory structures and permitted encroachments. These are things like detached garages where they can go, sheds, how far my eaves can encroach into a yard, really allowing for all those things that are typical to a home primarily, as well as allowing for architectural flexibility. We've updated the parking standards. You'll see that relationship between the use table and the required parking. Really cleaned up the landscape requirements to make those a lot easier to understand their applicability, as well as updated the sign permissions. So what you'll see is off-street parking. One of the things, just wanted to point out, was what we did was really build in some flexibilities to these districts. So when you see here, the CT, C1, the downtown, the Village of East Davenport, the industrial mixed-use districts exempt from parking requirements, on-street parking spaces in the commercial districts only can be counted towards your parking requirement, allowing for shared parking, and then existing non-residential structures in the C2 and the IMU that have less or no parking, so the effective date are allowed to continue that until they're torn down. Also required some bicycle parking. Commercial and the industrial mixed-use districts have some requirements for this. We've restricted it to those areas where there's really a lot of, would be more bike traffic. And then finally, at this time, we had done, in earlier drafts, talked about parking maximums, but kind of over time, as we've looked at it and kind of analyzed it, what we've come to find is, as these recently adopted storm water management controls are coming in, they're really controlling the size of the parking lots, and there would be some redundancies built in to include maximums at this time. Not to say that as you grow and as you continue to look at things that you can't come back to, the ordinance is easy enough to jump right back in and add some parking maximums at a later date. The landscape requirements, as I said, this is one of the more confusing sections of the ordinance. What we've done has been very clear here about where landscape is required, how big those landscape yards have to be, how much landscape has to go into those yards, and kind of how they're designed, so that confusion goes away and people are very clear about the amount of required landscape that's in place. Finally, the sign standards, those have been updated. A couple of things over time have happened. There's been some court decisions that have come down about content neutrality, so we've been very respectful of those decisions and really tried to make sure the ordinance reads "content neutral." Really tailored the size of the signs and various things to the actual districts so that the form and design of the districts, the signs work in concert with that, so you've got that kind of synergy going on between them. This is just an example of one of the tables that's in there that kind of summarizes the various sign permissions that are in place, whether the sign's exempt or has a permit. So you can see all of those there. It kind of summarizes what districts, different types of signs are allowed in. And then finally, kind of the last section of the ordinance, zoning administration. Many of these are current carryovers from your current code because they come from the state, so things like amendments and variances, those just kind of come through. We have added a few additional ones. One is the administrative exception. This is really allowing the zoning administrator to allow for very, very minor types of minor variances. It's really within certain thresholds. You know, these are things that, you know, I need a one-foot side setback variance, that would be allowed under the administrative exception. Again, fully appealable to the ZPA, and the zoning administrator can actually kick that to a full variance process if they feel that even though it's minor, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like a minor one. So there's some flexibility in that. The planned unit development has been revised. We've actually kind of put that together. It looks a more modern attempt at this. It's still something we wanted to keep to allow that flexibility. It's an approval process that lays on top of a zoning district, and in addition, requires some public benefits to come back to the city. So it's not really the idea of, we'll give you all these flexibilities and exceptions, and you go do your project. The idea is, the city should get some sort of public benefit or amenity in exchange, and we're flexible on what that really means, but the intent here is to make sure that that negotiation process works properly. Really clarified the site plan review process, as well as design review. Obviously, the design review board's looking at other things, so we wanted to make sure that that's very clear in there. And then finally, the one that I had mentioned earlier, the health services and congregate living permit. This is related to the ideas of those social service uses, and in some cases, having this extra level of review before those uses go into various districts where they're permitted per the use matrix. And then finally, the last section. We just wanted to clarify how the different non-conformities work. You have this now in your current ordinance, something all ordinances have to have. Tried to eliminate as many non-conformities as possible, but there's always some that come through. So we wanted to make sure the rules were very clear for non-conforming uses versus structures, versus lots, versus signs, versus things like site elements, things like landscape. We don't really feel your building should be penalized as being a non-conforming structure if you don't have the right landscaping. Let's focus on the landscaping component of that part of the development. And so with that, thank you very much for letting me come up and do the refresher, and happy to take any questions at the second part of the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. We have no presentations, except the one we just had. That almost makes sense, right? Petitions and communications from council and the mayor. I'll just go first, just everybody be safe this weekend holiday, both traveling, hopefully, we wish everybody that's coming here to visit family to safe and then to get home safe. Please don't drink and drive, anybody from the council. Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to actions item discussion, so we'll go back to Community Development. So for people, I know there's not too many of you, but I think you're all pretty veteran of this, but now we engage a little bit, and each section will address certain items, and you're, feel free to come up and talk again, and then the council will dialogue a bit. So back to Community Development, and Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five items on the Community Development Agenda this evening. Item number one is a first consideration ordinance for case number ORD 18-05, request of the City of Davenport to repeal and replace Title 17 of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled "Zoning" by adopting a new zoning ordinance and map and amending Titles 2 and 14 in order to make administrative changes to support the new code. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll move to, oh, please state your name and address or ward, please.
Hello, my name is Dennis Platt. I'm in Rich Kules, Warren. And I've just been reading through this document, and there's a couple of points I'm concerned about. I would like to suggest that this be pushed back one cycle, so that everyone have a fair opportunity to review it. I know this is something that's important to you. We've been talking about working on this kind of thing and building code issues for a long time, and I'm as happy to see this get attention as anybody, but I don't think the public is prepared to participate in this process at this time. Fair enough?
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Kim Brown, 4523 South Concord, and I'm in just one. And I agree with Dennis, I think we need to table this till the next cycle.
Thank you. And just for clarity, this is an ordinance change, so it will take six weeks, or three cycles. Is there anyone from the council who would like to ask questions of Arista, or just make comments? We'll start with Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Just a quick clarification, ma'am, if you could.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, okay. Didn't know.
Just briefly, on the no parking requirements for certain classifications, if you could just kind of talk about what those classifications are and why the mythology of no parking requirements? And then I have one more question after that.
Okay, so you were talking about the districts that are completely exempt.
Correct.
Okay, and just to refresh, that's the commercial transitional, the C1, which is the neighborhood commercial, CD, which is downtown, CV, which is Village of East Davenport, and the IMU, the industrial mixed-use. A lot of this was based on taking a look at kind of the lotting patterns in there, and it's the idea of, if you don't have the land to force people to build parking, why are we making them build parking? It's really looking at these types. So we're looking at areas that the buildings are tight, there's not a lot of room. You're not prohibited from building parking if you have the opportunity, but we don't want to push you into a variance process. And often, what we've found, just from our experience doing ordinances, is that in these areas, if the, if the type of use coming in needs parking, if that's part of the market, it'll find a way to provide parking. But again, we're trying to encourage the reuse of a lot of the buildings that are located in these areas as well. So one of the key parts of the IMU, the industrial mixed-use, is to reuse the buildings that are there. And so that's, that's really the intent of that.
Okay. And then the second question, is there a planned institutional district still?
Yes. It is, it's called the Special Institutional Campus. It's the institutional campus. It's a conversion of the PID into the, into a special purpose district.
And it's basically all the verbiage and everything. It's the same, just a different title?
It has a different title, and we, I think, we kept the majority of the process the same. It's just been streamlined a little bit and kind of things course-corrected that have always been kind of a little bit difficult to administer, but essentially, it is, there's still the land use plan that has to come in, there's still that evaluation period.
And the public part?
Yes, that's all still in there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Arista, two years, I remember when you had red hair.
I miss it. You gotta change.
You brought a lot of common sense and streamlined the process. You know, I thought we had a pretty good process before you got here. Wonder, can you rate after 20 years of doing this, how Davenport's was before you started?
Well, I've made it 1,000 times better.
I know.
I mean, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
On a scale from 1 to 10?
No, I mean, the processes here, you didn't have a, you, they weren't that convoluted. It was the idea of more of just streamlining them to get them more. So on a scale of 1 to 10, I mean, I would say, they were pretty high. I'm not going to give a number, because I'm not going to get trapped, but they were pretty high. And the idea was, is all we did was refine a lot of them, and then we added a couple of things in. Like, we took things and we added in administrative exceptions, and we did things like the design review board. They look at the Village of East Davenport as well, so making sure that that's clarified in there. And so a lot of it was moving around, cleaning up the language, making sure the standards are in line, and getting that moving forward. And then the PUD is probably the most significant one. We did modernize that a little bit, so that it kind of, so it's an approval process now, and it's got those flexibilities, and the city's getting something back when that process is undertaken.
Sounds good. Hey, good job. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you. I'd written a note about the courtyard. Can you describe that a little bit further? Is it perpendicular to the street, or how does, how does that work?
Well, again, we're not specifically saying it has to be perpendicular to the street, but the most typical form is the drawing that you saw, where it is a courtyard that comes down from the street, and the homes are kind of lined up around it. You need significant land to be able to do this, so it's not really something you would get kind of in the urban core here necessarily. I mean, I guess you could, but... So the idea is, is that it's allowing for another type of housing, it allows the houses to organize around a courtyard, creates more of a kind of familiar pocket neighborhood. You've also probably heard them called pocket neighborhoods, that's what that is. The homes that are directly abutting the street do have to face the street, so it's not like they're turning their back to the street, but it's allowing that kind of deeper kind of organization. So it's kind of like taking a multifamily courtyard building and making it out of single-family, two-family homes.
Okay, but it wouldn't be like, kind of cutting off a neighborhood?
I know. When we first started talking, you know, we were talking about mixed-use walkability, all that kind of stuff, so that would not be in contradiction to those goals. No, it would not. No, it would not.
Excellent, then.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. Two questions, and I guess this would be of actually Bruce, so thank you if I have any questions. Bruce, could, I guess it would, you would be the likely person, but first of all, if you would talk a little bit about the process to date and the public input to date, just for people watching of this process, when it started and what's happened, what's rolled out?
Sure, good question. And actually, Arista may be able to, and other staff.
Not exactly.
Roughly two years. So it did start with, I think, some public meetings, some stakeholder review, just figuring out what are some of the issues, what are some things that you'd like to see fixed. I think that led to a technical review where they've actually identified some of those issues. They'd gone through our code to be able to identify where some of those common best practices that they like to see fixed would be. And so that was another opportunity, put out on the website for people to see what that looks like. I know there was a whole series of open houses that they did here toward the end. I think that they had a draft of the ordinance out maybe a year ago with some opportunities for comments and they would respond to some of those. And then we ended with, really, at this stage, we're coming back to now what is more of a normal rezoning process where you go out and you, we've put it out, the final draft out, the map is out. We're getting some calls. So I mean, part of the process too is some property owners are seeing what's proposed and they're letting us know, and so we're looking at those one-on-one. So this, we really do want to say this is an opportunity for the six weeks for us to really chew on it. So there will be changes. We're planning already, I think, to bring back a batch of some changes for the second reading, there may be some for the third. And I don't know, Arista can probably speak to this, but I think in general, we may have a batch of things after it gets approved. I mean, that's kind of natural for this. It's such a big change, there's forty-some thousand properties involved. So it's a lot of public input, that's kind of where we are today, so.
Okay, thank you. And just to comment, and thank you, Bruce. I mean, and I did want to thank Bruce for, I've had a number of conversations with him over this process. I did, in third word, talk to people in the ward about looking carefully at their neighborhoods and what was happening. And in the neighborhood I happen to live in, there was an active participation. They looked, they went parcel by parcel and came back to staff and sat down in a meeting and then a second meeting. And that is still, that is still available to people to do that. Bruce, I would assume if a neighborhood wants to do that, there's still time to do that, take a look at that. So I did, you know, I continue to have some questions and concerns about the definition of single family and two-family. And my concerns are in a great part with what's driving that right now. It's not, it's the marketplace and it's investors and I am concerned about language that would not protect our heritage neighborhoods and because I don't see the people that are doing the investing as necessarily looking for, they're looking for maximum gain in what they're doing. So I am still concerned about that, but thank you for continuing to talk to me and I'm sure we'll be having many more conversations as the weeks go on. Thank you.
Alderman Mattson.
Thank you for one more quick comment. I just want to recognize Mr. Ingram in the back, who his commission planning is only also took a look at this. So thank you for your work, so.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'll make a couple of brief statements as well. So first, I'd like to start off by thanking Camero's. I think we made the right choice by selecting your firm. You guys have done a great job. I think you and Ryan have worked really well with our staff and our elected officials. If you've given them problems, I haven't heard anybody say anything about it. So I think you guys have done a really good job and I think you also did a nice job of getting the complete perspective of the residents of Davenport and what they wanted and what they were seeing. There was a lot of opportunity for public input. And then I'd also like to say our city staff has done an incredible job as well. This is a huge undertaking and they put a lot of effort into this. And as I understand it, they cut up the city into quadrants and went parcel by parcel across the entire city looking for potential conflicts and things that could go wrong and people they needed to seek out and say, hey, this is what's going to happen, we'd like to get your feedback before we do this. We didn't have to do that. I think it's the right thing to do and I commend you guys. You know, the council didn't ask you to do that either. You took that upon yourselves and I think the staff has done a really good job with this. So a few comments of positive things I really liked that are coming out of this. The accessory dwelling units, I like that. The neighborhood commercial establishments, going back to allowing mixed uses within neighborhoods in certain cases when it's the right case. I think the use matrix is going to be incredibly popular with people who are using the zoning code and providing clarity for the landscaping. That's a big one that you hear from business people and developers. It was really hard to use. Not that it was bad, that I think the products typically turned out all right, but it was really hard for folks to use. One thing that I'll bring up is, if not a negative, it's at least I'm going to continue to track this, is the parking maximums. I understand that maybe the market is trying to fix itself, but I can think of a few instances of places that have been built in just the last few years that have hundreds of parking spaces that will never be used ever for anything. And if we continue to build places like that, that's something I would like to revisit because I'd like to get away from that practice. And then a final comment that, to the two folks who asked that this be pushed back, since we only have one cycle in December, there will be the two weeks of December where we don't meet, which will allow for an extra two weeks of consideration for anyone who's tracking this. And if you're keeping track at home, I think January 9th is the date that this would be approved. So we still have plenty of time to field questions, for people to reach out to staff and to council with feedback, and then we will consider those in the coming two months. Seeing no one else, we will move on to item number two, which is a resolution for case F-18-15, being the request of Robert Murray for a final plat for a two-lot subdivision located at 915 Floral Lane. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on that item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number three is a resolution for case F-18-16, request of McCarthy Improvement Company and Lindwood Stone Products Company for a final plat for a two-lot subdivision north of East 56th Street and east of Utica Ridge Road. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number four is a motion approving the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation for the reprogramming of the unspent and unobligated community development block grant funds from CDBG year 43, ending June 30th, 2018. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. And item number five is a motion approving the local objectives for the community development block grant program for the year 45 annual action plan covering July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on and I'll ask Alderman Kluel to set the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Gripp. I move that item one be moved forward to discussion and the remaining items to consent.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that concludes community development this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. The next area to be discussed is public safety and Alderwoman Rossen will lead that discussion. Alderwoman Rossen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll read these by section and then ask for input. Item number one, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule 11 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only by adding Jackson Avenue along both sides between Concord Street and Ditmer Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, that item will move on. Second section is a first consideration ordinance amending Schedule 10 of Chapter 10.96 entitled Two-Hour Parking by adding 12th Street along the south side from 2109 to 2123 East 12th Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Section three, resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on the listed dates to hold outdoor events. We have a whopping one item this evening. River Center Adler Ballet at the Adler, December 7th, 2018, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Closure location will be Third Street from the east side of Brady to Pershing and Pershing southbound lanes from Third to Fourth Street. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Anyone from council? That item will move on. Second to the last section. Oh, sorry.
Yes, sorry, thank you.
Did you, you didn't punch in?
I did, and then I.
Oh, I see it. Okay, sorry. Go ahead. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. A question about this, and I'm probably remembering incorrectly, but was this the issue, was this the event last year, I'm remembering this as the one where the buses ended up parking along Pershing and we had to, and they were blocking the new businesses? Does anybody remember that?
Yes, I can help you with that. Yes, it was.
Oh, thank you.
And so what we've asked of the River Center is that when they're going to have these events, that they fill out a special events application that we need at least eight weeks prior to an event, so those can be approved by the council so they can do the bus unloading at the Adler for the kids.
The, excuse me, but the issue was that the buses then parked along the street and the point, we were asking them to move and come back, so we don't want the parking on the city streets.
Yeah, my understanding from Sergeant Voits and Traffic is that the buses will be on the west side of Pershing in the south, so the south traveled lane, so it would still allow traffic to go north and south, but that's where they, apparently, the school or someone apparently needs to stage them so they can come back around to get the kids.
I'm gonna, I think we need some discussion about this. I don't really know how to do this. The problem is we have businesses who have no parking. I'm not looking at you.
No, I know, I understand.
I understand. But the issue was that we now have animated business, those offices, those buildings are animated, there's businesses going on, there's restaurants going on, and now they have no place to have their patrons because we have buses parked for hours on our streets. So I'm gonna, I guess, gonna be asking if we can amend this to have them park in the, perhaps the, because in the ballpark parking lot or whatever, and then come back around. I think there's a way they can travel back around. I'd be interested in someone else that has more experience at this than me, but.
So I would, thank you. Are you finished? So I would ask someone from staff to, so as opposed, we're sitting here right now, we don't know what other parking is actually available. I would find it difficult to amend this at this moment. So I would suggest that can we get with them and actually do something different to address that? Because she, Alderwoman McGinnis is right, I was actually down there at the Black Hawk when the buses were lining the street and that is a bit inconvenient for traffic. So can we get with them to get other parking arrangements somewhere downtown that's available?
Yeah, if you'd like to leave this item on discussion for next week, we'll go ahead and have a meeting. We'll make sure that we get all those details lined out and we'll update the council.
All right, thank you very much. Any other discussion on this item from council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Madam Chair. You know, this morning there were 20 school buses staged on the riverfront in the parking lots from the stadium east, but they were Illinois school buses, so they did mind a little inconvenience.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. But to that point, there is lots of parking down there in our parking lots where the casino was, so that could be an option, that could work. Anyone else comments on this item? Okay, that item will be moved to discussion. And the last section, motion approving beer and liquor license applications, new licenses, owners, temporary permits, or temporary outdoor area location transfers, et cetera. Bud's Skyline Riverview, 1201 East River Drive, new owner, outdoor area license type C for liquor. Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh, 3200 East Kimberly Road, new license type E for liquor, wine, and beer. Great development this is that's going in. And Dollar General Store, 7510 Northwest Boulevard, new license type C for beer and wine. Any public with comment on any of those items? Anyone from council? Seeing and hearing no one, those items will move on. The last section is annual license renewals. Those are there for your convenience to peruse through. I won't read through those and that would take us to the end of public safety agenda and I would ask Alderman Condon to go ahead and set the agenda.
I'll move to put item number three on discussion and all other items would go on consent.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. I think we're done, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Rossen. The third area we're going to discuss is Public Works and Alderman Ambrose will lead that discussion. Alderman Ambrose.
All right, thank you, Honor. Opening the discussion with the first item being a third consideration ordinance amending the 2018 Uniform Plumbing Code by adding a new paragraph, 6.05.2.2. I'm going to read all these and then I'll come back for questions. Number two is resolution of acceptance for the Rockingham Road Improvement Project, completed by Langman Construction Incorporated at a cost of $2,288,589.67. Number three is a resolution authorizing and approving the use of condemnation and commencement of condemnation proceeds, if necessary, for the right-of-way easements associated with the East 53rd Street Reconstruction and Widening Project. Number four is a resolution of acceptance for the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and pavement associated with the Falcon Point additions site improvements. Number five is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number six is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number seven is a resolution assessing the cost of replacing sidewalks at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number eight is a resolution assessing the cost of repairing sewer laterals at various lots and tracks of real estate. Number nine is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracks of real estate. The last item is a motion to award a contract for the February accessibility restroom addition to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island in the amount of $86,245.0.
Did you miss anything? I don't think you read them.
Resolution, the use of condemnation and commencement associated with, if necessary, the right-of-way easement associated with the East 53rd Street Reconstruction Widening Project. All right. Couple of issues. Number two, Alderman Dunn, can you assess the project for us?
Yeah, he did a fantastic job. Glad it's done. Thank you.
All right. And number 10, do we have someone to highlight the February restrooms?
It's upgrading the existing restroom that's there. It's currently for staff and so it's allowing for it to be accessible for public use for whenever anyone's there.
And those are the restrooms on the east side of the park or isn't the Mother Goose?
I believe it's on the, in the learning centers on the east side.
Okay, sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
Ray, did you ask for public comment?
Public comment? Yes, I did.
Thank you. I move to place all items on consent, please.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Honor.
Everybody got that? Thank you. All right, the last area to be discussed is finance and Alderwoman Tomkins will lead that long discussion.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Hold on, everybody, we just have one item. So our item tonight is a, number one is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2020 budget policies. This is just an annual formality that we do that kind of explains kind of what we go through and how we set that budget. It's a one-page document. So does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Alderwoman McGinnis, please set the agenda.
And I make a motion to set item one, move item one to the consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. And then there's a list, just five items of purchases between $10,000 and $50,000, just for your reading pleasure. And that takes care of finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Tomkins. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, motions from anybody or staff? Very good. Seeing none? Is there any public with business, you may discuss any item for five minutes, that you'd like to discuss with council about anything? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name, address, and/or ward. You have five minutes, please.
My name is Dewayne Womack. I live at 216 South Birchwood Avenue. I'm not sure what ward it is. My wife and I started Street Friends Quadsies about three months ago. We attempt to take stuff for our homeless people to keep them warm because we don't have enough shelters. I'm sorry, I'm kind of emotional because it's really true and.
Take your time, we're good.
We have no shelters for these people to go. We have no shelters that will take children and they're hiding in alleyways, places that are not safe. I've tried to contact our mayors. I've tried to contact our mayor's office for the last three months with no response from him or anybody. I'm here to see if there's some kind of help we can get to get these poor people off the streets. It's not only in Davenport, it's everywhere. I've been to the whole Quad Cities, and there, like I said, 450 to 600 people every night, including kids, with no place to go, and nobody has answers. I'm asking for help.
Thank you. This is our part where we listen, we take into consideration, and we'll discuss, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there any other public? Seeing none. Is there any other comments from city officials? Is there a motion to adjourn? Move, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.